Morena Kioro Tarofa, welcome to Samo Capital Radio this morning. Anita and Kylie.
Morena!
Well, well, today is another historical day of this country. You know, events like this, like this ekoi and a meeting in the parliament. We witnessed over the last thirty-six hours what's been happening on the last week, what's been happening around the country. And Anita, you've probably met some of them, given they hosted them here in Poorua.
They have been hosted in Pordirua. I haven't been down and met them because my diary has been so full. Kylie's been down. I just wish we didn't have to have them here and I hold David Seymour responsible. Because we're going to have six months of this and I'm pretty angry about him. This shouldn't even be happening in my view. But Kylie, how did it go, meeting them all?
It was really good yesterday at Ngatitou de Main. We did some signs and some water practice and it was really good. It was about Koutahitanga, which is like the unity. And there were people from all walks of life yesterday, all walks of life. And it was a beautiful day. And then this morning, everyone left quite early from Tagapuahia. So when we got there, a lot of people had already made their way in. But again, it's been awesome, not very disruptive.
Yes.
People have been behaving themselves, spoke to the police yesterday at the event and the Maori wardens. So yeah, it's really awesome. And what I really liked the other day about when they were welcomed along Wanera Drive there, we had everybody there with their flags, their Samauan flags, their Tongan flags, you know, it was pretty cool to see.
And we've had no disruption in the city from having people stay.
I think it's very orderly, the way it was being organised throughout the country. And that's good to see. And even this disruption for the traffic flow this morning.
Oh, there was nothing. Everybody left so early, the train stations, all the extra trains. Everything's just flowed so smoothly. So I hope it goes well today.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got three of our staff members heading down to livestream some of the events from the city.
Good.
But shout out to the staff from supporting the KoPapa in there.
It's good, yeah.
I think my son, my elder son, he's actually also marching with his Eifaitanga.
Perfect.
I think there are so many people from so many cultures who are supporting it. It's awesome.
All right, so good luck to the ekoi you're marching. If you're listening to us from some of the events will be on our page some time later today. All right, so let's move on to some of the things that's been happening around the... This thing is for safety for our young whanau. And it's good that the council are also taking and leading some of these things, checking the seats in it.
We've had a whole month, last month, of road safety. So with the police doing a lot of advertising and police out there, so now they've moved to the safety for the kids. This is about damaged car seats or booster seats. So they can drop them up at Trash Palace and they can get all their seats checked so that they know whether they're safe or not. And it's just working with the community, make sure. And so up there at Trash Palace, they've got the Green Bites as well, the Trust and the Eco Waste, Earthlink. There's clothing from, that goes to Wainoa Mata High School for tech classes. So there's, excuse me, there's lots to do and people to get involved in. But we encourage people to get their car seats and booster seats checked.
All right. I thank you for that chocolate, chocolate.
We've had a month of choc- (inaudible). Choc-Timer Fest. I have to say, it's our third year running and it just gets bigger and better every year. I personally only partake in one thing. I'll see what Kylie does in a minute. But, and that was one chocolate thing that I just couldn't even eat because it's so rich. But we've gone through half a tonne of chocolate from Whittakers with over twenty venues participating. So we had all the drinks and then we had all the baking and it's been amazing. The pepper mill that won the drink one was like a jelly tip. It had jelly at the bottom. And then it was a mixed drink on the top and people just queued and they have actually bought it back because it's been so successful. So they won the drink. And then the urban cookie was actually a croissant with a cookie inside it. And it didn't look flesh, but tasted awesome apparently. They have sold...
That's all what matters.
They're thinking they're going to keep it on theirs as well. So it's really one of our biggest promotions and everybody has been supporting it. And I know a number of people who did a lot of them and they have gained a lot of weight. So it's fairly obvious. I couldn't believe how many people have actually done so many. What did you try, Kylie?
I wasn't here over that time. I was overseas. But in previous years, I loved the drinks. It's always the drinks for me because they look exciting. So it makes me want to try them.
That blue cookie monster drink looked impressive.
Yeah, but the effort that they put into it, it's...
So you could have taken the money, the income taken by the council, more than hundred thirty thousand if you would straight. But it's good to see the, you know, the revenue raised out of your monthly...
It's good for local businesses. That's the most important thing is to keep supporting our local businesses.
And I'm quite sure with their creativity, some of these would become a standard in their, you know, food and drinks.
Yeah, they're definitely keeping them on, as they said, yeah.
So that's very good. The shared path down here?
Yep.
That's working well?
It is. We had the opening of it, gosh, way back in October. And it's 1.7km obviously and it runs from almost, I'll say Parramatta School, just north of that, all the way down. And it's been, we had so many letters of, oh, why are you spending this money? Because everyone thought it was council. It's actually government paid. It didn't cost us a dime. Now I'm getting so many people saying it's so safe. We're loving it because we've got race platforms at each road along there as well, so it's safer. So I have to say, it's awesome and it joins along to the pump track at the lagoon and also new streetlights and those pedestrian crossings. So something that has gone from a real negative has been a positive and I do thank the previous government.
They funded it.
They funded it because this new government's not funding those sort of, any paths. So it's something that we're happy to have.
And it's good for the rate payers. They don't have to fork out?
That's right, exactly. And it joins on to the work that we're doing at the lagoon. So, you know, we've now started the upgrade work there. So people are now saying, actually, it's all working really well.
I was just wondering, what other similar project have you had in a pipeline that's now not being funded?
Oh, the walkway along Tetahe Bay Road.
Right.
So that one has been rejected. So we were going to do an upgrade there with a footpath along the city centre. That's the only other major one. We didn't actually have any other cycleways planned or footpaths planned.
So you need to reorganise your long-term planning?
We are. We're looking at our budgets and we've got meetings on that coming up. So we have to work out what we're going out with our annual plan is our next one, yeah.
Yeah, Alicia, you're not like Wellington City Council where I belong.
No, we don't need an observer.
You're observing well.
Well, I think we all get on and we leave our party politics behind. That's the difference.
Yes, yeah. Thank you. Water. Summertime, we're heading to the time where we need to restrain from...
Water is the ongoing battle with council because of course we've gone into our level-one water restrictions and we've had lots of rain. So we're hoping that we won't have to go any lower. And councils signed the new entity agreement to go to the next step. So we had, all the councils in the region had to decide whether they would sign an agreement to join a new entity. So at the moment, we've had the Carterton and South Wire Apo poll out. And at the moment, Horofanua and Kapiti are yet to sign, but they're looking like they will walk. So we could end up with an entity with just four councils, which is not what the government ideally wanted. They wanted a larger entity. But at the moment, it's just looking like Wellington, Lower Hut, Upper Hut and Pordirua. So we're trying because you need a bigger entity to borrow more money. But that's ongoing. So the last bit of legislation for that comes in September next year, right on election time. So the councils are working right up to the elections next year. But the good news is we are still on level-one water restrictions. But I'm asking people still to watch what they use.
Yes.
Because we don't want to jump to the next level. And yes, we've had rain, but we don't know what we've got coming. And of course, we're still working on the wastewater storage tank. More and more people are asking me what that is. So because you now see the sides of it coming up down by the railway station. So that is a wastewater storage tank. I call it something else, but it's a vital piece of the puzzle that will help out overflows.
Or just call it something else.
Yes, exactly. So that is, yeah, something that's cost an awful lot of money and, you know, with new budgets and things like that. It's a shame we're not doing it now, but it's vital.
Ole, vangali, I was just thinking when you were talking about some of these councils haven't yet quite decided. So what would be the outcome for them if they don't group together and try and get the scale?
Yeah, well, the councils over the Wire Apo are talking about going together with one other up the hill. So they're talking four. And then the ones in Kapiti are talking about going with Palmerston. So instead of having councils with eight or ten in, you might get three with four in. And so you just don't get that same number to get the borrowings. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's a shame. (speaking Samoan) I'm just wondering, you know how you were working towards the three waters?
Yes.
If that had come through?
We would have been better off.
Okay, is that how you see it? Is that what the rest of the council see it?
Yes, they do. And other councils in the region because it would have been operative by now. And it would have moved things off the council's box. So yeah, personally, our council liked the old three waters, but we had to work with a new one.
Right, okay. The thing is with all the changes, it has an impact on all the rate payers.
It does. And because we still need to do water meters, so that's the next step. And we only have them partially funded in our long-term plan. So ideally, it would be the water entity that would put those in. Hut City might start them next year because they have budgeted completely for it. But yeah, it really depends on the size.
We need a billionaire like Elon Musk. He comes and gives some million dollars to help with things like this.
Isn't he now going to Trump on government?
I don't know what sort of democracy they do there, but they buy the power to get into parliament.
It's interesting, isn't it?
Yes, so three new exhibitions, including an amazing Pacific one. There's a selection of work from Diane Prince, so a painter, a weaver, set designer and education, whose work emphasises Maori rights. Rangi Rua, which celebrates two pairings of two artists. And Taku Hoya in an exhibition that features work from Aotearoa artists for the 2024 Festival of Pacific Arts and Culture.
And so we've also had another couple because I've done Leana Latua. She's opened up down there in a small gallery for a short time, so she's got her art. And then we had the kids from Pordirua East School have done a pilot programme with Partaka Education. And they've got their art. They've had a whole term of going out and visiting different places with the art teachers from Partaka. So I was really impressed with that on Friday night. Huge amount of Pacific involved in that. And it looks like a programme that we should continue with. Hopefully, they'll get more funding, but it's been an awesome thing.
If there are walls around the area that needs a beautification, perhaps we can get these sort of kids to come and draw some lovely murals on them.
We'd have to ask the private property owners.
Yeah, we don't have any rules that we can equip murals on. I've got requests a sheet long. I have one from Great Wellington, the same problem. So yeah, and the tag has been damaging those things. So yeah.
Shame.
It is.
We're just about getting to Christmas again.
We certainly are. I think it's four weeks. Yeah, it's scary. So we're going to start on the fifteenth of December. We have our Christmas in the park. Where we have the food trucks from three-thirty to seven-thirty. We're hoping the weather's going to be fine and that way we can have it outside because last year we were inside. And there's market stalls and face painting. And then Nick Tansley comes along at five o'clock till seven-thirty and we do Christmas carols. You know, we tell people, bring a blanket or a chair and we sing along. And that was really fun last year. And then on the thirteenth of December, we have our last, final Pacific night market.
Right.
Up at Co'Kolintu. That was huge last week. And then we have a community come together with, at Kura Street Park in Teda Bay, with a hundred and eighty different craft stalls. And that's always a good event, Gold Coin Entry. It's quite close to Christmas. So if you want to do a little bit of Christmas shopping before then, we have Whitby Collegiate. They have their Christmas craft this Saturday at nine o'clock at the college. And then the Plymouth and one, I haven't got the date.
Five to seven, that's...
Yeah, on the Sunday, yeah. Oh, Saturday. Yeah, so they're all having different stalls. So they'll be interesting.
Right, lot for people to take in and get to enjoy.
Yeah.
Participating. Gold Coin, two enter, all of these or are there some free ones?
Just that one. The free one is the Whitby Collegiate one and Plymouth and School.
All right.
The other thing we have coming up, which people can register for, is the Christmas Day, where we do the Christmas lunch. There is two hundred or two hundred and fifty spaces which are filling up. So that's for people who are less fortunate or don't have people with them. I'm working with that one this year because I'm staying behind. And yeah, so if people want to do that, they register via the arena.
All right. And when is that on? On the twenty-fifth? Twenty-fifth, okay. Kylie, you've been just a pet food.
Yes, Pet Food Drive. So what started off as a very small community event has become quite a large one really. So it's the fifth annual Pordirua Christmas Food Drive. So what happens is that we put the call out and ask people to donate pet food and dog food for people that struggle around Christmas time. Because it's a really expensive time of the year for a lot of families and sometimes pets mess out. So we usually get quite a lot of donations and there's a couple of drop-off points for that. One is at the Supply Room in Mana. And the other is at the One Agency Office in Pordirua, down in Pathen Place South. And then we put a call out to the community and we usually have it at the Kapimana Netball Courts. And then it's quite a nice thing actually, isn't it? Because Anita and I have been doing this for a couple of years now. But we have the community come in and we're able to give out cat food, dog food. So we really like to call on some donations and from the community.
Right. So food for pets, that's what you're looking for?
It's just about pets.
Just pets.
There's always more people than there is animal food available. So we know the needs there.
And is there a number for people to call if they want to know a bit more about this?
They can call me.
Yeah, and the number is?
O two seven?
Yeah.
Eight two six, oh three oh oh. Yeah, so whether you want to give and/or receive, I can answer all those questions.
Have you got Facebook on it?
Yep, so they can go onto my deputy mayor's page as well and they can have a look on there. But we'll be sharing it quite a lot between now and the next couple of weeks. So we usually dispense kind of the last week leading up to Christmas.
So you accept cash or vouchers or food?
Yes, absolutely. So the Supply Room did collect some money over last Christmas. And so we purchased additional pet food when we ran out, yeah.
I hear that, you know, the citizenship ceremony last night.
We had sixty people through, only fourteen families, lots of individuals last night. And they were from sixteen different nationalities. There was Samaua, Tonga. We had so many people through by the end of the evening because we had photos at the end after I've sworn them in. My face felt because it was just, everyone wants a photo. I was stuck smiling, but it's just such an awesome event. And really special for people. So we had it in the dance studio last night because Partaka was full.
They will treasure that photo.
Until they do. I had my chains on and by the end of the evening, I had been given three different Pacific lines. Yeah, the photos went from one chains to more and more.
Thank you for that. That's good information to share.
It is. I had a big Pacific Day yesterday, obviously, apart from citizenship. I went to the Ministry of Pacific Peoples launch for their new director for commissioning and partnerships, which is a...